Welcome, everybody. I'm Jerry McGee. And Dave Morley is not able to join us today, so I will be running the thing along with our other board members who are in attendance. Thank you for all your participation. See, there's a lot of you out there. And today we're going to listen to a presentation by Kewa Partners. We will then have time for comments from any board members and then comments from new members and questions that you may have regarding the presentation. So as we have quite a full agenda, I'm going to turn it over now to Mark and let him show us what the plans are for the properties that are in question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and those members joining us virtual virtual reality wise. My name is Mark Pramar. I'm a property owner here, but my role today is I'm representing Kewa Partners who have holdings along Beach Walker Drive, of which there are two subjects that I wish to talk to the community about. One of them is informational in nature. No action is being requested. It's part of a larger campaign of sharing with the greater community a potential text amendment to the development agreement, which is a master development agreement between Kewa Partners and the town of Kewa Island. And the second one is involving a very specific parcel and a request for consideration by the board for one of the parameters of an agreement that we have between two parties. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to first talk about the series of parcels between Kika Offices and the General Store.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I have a brief slide deck for our conversation and I'm hoping at least the board members can register that you can see this graphic in front of you. It's essentially two aerial photographs of the same area. Can you see it? Okay?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, thank you. The top, the first topic, which is informational in nature, is involving property between Kika's offices right there and the general store up in this area. There are whole collection of various parcels between that two, those two areas. I'm certain almost everyone on this call is familiar with the general area, but let me give you greater context. At the upper part of the page here, this is the Kewa Island Parkway right here. The main gate is in this position, just right beside the general store. This is the intersection with Beach Walker Drive. Beach Walker Drive sweeps down this direction and off the map. The neighborhoods and uses in the nearby area include the main sales office here, River View here. The upper part of Inlet Cove Club in this position, I've already mentioned Kika Offices, Greens Lake in this position right here, and you can see ever so slightly the upper range of Sparrow Pond. The other activity or use in the area is the first fairway along here of the Cougar Point course. The partners have been undertaking early conceptual analysis of this entire area over multiple years, but in particular over the past, say, four to six months in terms of a normal assessment process. I mean, for those of you that are familiar with the planning and design process, you began a process of looking at what are the entitlements? What are you allowed to do? What is the land like, which is quite frankly, our lead story, designing with nature? What is, what is the, what are the conditions on the property? Obviously, we maintain a really good sense of market conditions that warrant a particular approach on a piece of property or not. All those begin to come together. And we've been reaching a point now where we informally approached the town about a potential amendment to the development agreement, which controls land use development of all Kewa Partners Holdings in this area. Now, what I'd like to do is transition to what is this area? What is, what are the controls like right now? You see these numbers, eight, nine, 10, 11, and the asterisk in this position. That's a collection of parcels that are separate and distinct. Each one of those has its own unique zoning and development controls. And it's very unusual. For those of you who are familiar with the many years of Kewa Partners and it's all its forms, the 1.0 Kuwaiti version, the 2.0 Charleston Family Version, or now South Street Partners all have to develop in a manner consistent with development and controls. But you might kind of wonder, well, why are there so many parcels in here? Because normally you'd have one parcel as a whole. Most of the property on Kewa is like that. Well, it's about, Shannon mentioned earlier, the archaeological dig, its history. When the Kuwaitis first purchased 10,000 acres from the heirs of the C.C. Royal family in 1974, they bought intact in a massive, large area with the exception of a handful of home sites along Eugenia Avenue. During the earliest of years, I think it was around 1975, they sold off two parcels in this position, one the general store and one the site of what would become Beach Walker Office Park. Now it's void of those offices, but it was a Beach Walker Office Park. In fact, for you early timers, you would probably even remember a time when the general store had a firehouse right beside, our only fire truck was right part of the general store in that location. But those were sold off to others. The, this property with the panhandle on it, with the asterisk, the history on that is there were seven heirs to Mr. Royal when he passed away. One heir in particular had a, had a focus and alignment with a particular religious belief system. And there was a request at time of closing to identify a minimum one acre parcel for a potential church on Kewa. So the Kuwaitis identified this location, it's actually larger than an acre, for the potential for a family member to at some time in the future, build a church on that property. That never was realized. We don't know the full background to it. But in about 2017 or so, they approached the Kewa Partners to see if the partnership wanted to buy this back essentially. And the partnership, what partnership did choose to buy it back? Can you, can you still hear me? Okay, because I'm getting some reads about my, okay. So on in 2018, I believe, this property would, excuse me, 2015, apologies, 2015, the partnership bought this property back and went through a rezoning process at that time. Many of you in the immediate area probably remember the rezoning process to allow for residential or commercial development. I skipped over the Beach Walker Office Park. That was actually purchased back by the partnership in 2008. So what resulted then, when you purchase property back, is you have this quilt of parcels that have long history of some like eight and 10 and 11 had always been in the fold of Kewa Partners or their predecessors. But these two parcels were re-engaged as a whole. Our thought is rather than piecemeal development in this area, and I'm going to go through some scenarios that test that, rather than piecemeal that with somewhat slightly diverse residential and commercial development controls, we think it makes more sense to consolidate those in one parcel and develop a comprehensive plan for the whole. But before we get to that point, one of the tests that we do internally is treating these as isolated parcels and say, no, we have to live with that. We have to live with the conditions that exist today. Each one of these parcels has a certain zoning classification. So if you look at this upper area, parcel eight, which is this one right here, is only zone for commercial. And you'll see factors off to the right there of what the controls are, of how much commercial you could have on each parcel. Beginning with parcel nine, each one of these other parcels has a combination of a residential classification or a commercial classification. That's not unusual. We have other parcels on Kewa, like in the West Beach area or in the East Beach area, where it's a combination of residential or commercial or in the vein of Kewa Island Golf Resort, they have certain resort act classifications. When you begin to apply the standards for each one of these zoning classifications to the acreage for each parcel and convert that into, well, how many residential units can you have on each parcel? So let me choose the largest one, parcel 11. That's in this position right here, which is sort of directly opposite River View in the upper portion of Inlet Cove adjacent to Kika Offices and exposure in this portion of Greens Lake. That's, that zone R3, which self-imposed allows for 10 units per acre. When you apply that to the acreage, you can get 60, technically, this is about technical. You can technically get 60 units on that. So each parcel has this sort of potential from a mathematical standpoint. The same is true for the commercial. So the important factor here, because a common question at this point is, well, can you do both? Can you do all of that? No, you have to make choices. So let's take the old Beach Walker Office Park area. That allows for either 10 residential units or up to 19,000 square feet of, of commercial, which probably would be office if it were thought that way. You can't do both of those. If you were to do a portion of it in office use, you have to allocate a specific area that's only attributed to commercial. And then the residual or whatever is left over allows for residential, but that doesn't necessarily mean you could do all 10. You have to use the density allowance to do less than 10. So I, that was a common question raised in other sessions. But my comment is, right now, those are the existing conditions and allowances. Now, I could, well, let me just keep going. So one of the factors that is used to consider, this is about an internal process that we use to consider, well, what makes the most sense? What is the most appropriate from a business planning perspective, from a community development standpoint in terms of the Kewa Partners? So what we do is to take this information, our understanding of the site physically, the zoning allowances and the shapes of the site, and so, and then all the conditions that exist. And we go to this document. This is the first transition. So you see these, these are property lines embedded in gray shaded areas right here and right here. These are the prop, common property lines between each of these isolated parcels with the, with the existing setbacks that occur with on, within that, which means just like your own individual home site or cottage site, you, you can't develop the entirety of the parcel that you're on. You have certain standards that you have to meet. There's certain setbacks off of Beach Walker Drive or off the lagoon over here, and they vary depending upon specific conditions. So this diagram attempts to clarify where you can place buildings. The other factor that you're going to see as we go along this discussion is each parcel is isolated from each other, which means that you have curb cuts at each one of these points. Now, we can discover where's the best location for a long run like this. Like this panhandle, it can only be here, you know, where the old office park is. I'm not saying it's where it is right now, but that would be a logical location where you have a curb cut. But the outlier is this parcel over here, which is behind the general store and adjacent to the main gate. If you're all familiar, we all go through the main gate with muscle memories, so we don't see certain things like we used to. But if you're familiar with that, you know, that little parking area right behind the main sales center where some people are directed so they can park, get out of the car and deal with an issue with a gate operation. That is right in that position. The only way to get to this parcel is in that position. You're going to hear me later on, reconfirm, that makes no sense. That, that's an unsafe condition and would warrant a commitment by the developers to not allow for vehicular access along that way. That it's, you'll see this come up in some studies that I've done. The other odd part is this parcel, parcel 10. By any reasonable standard, for all of you that golf Cougar Point, it's on the left side of the fairway. There's nothing to suggest that that isn't anything but part of the golf course. In fact, if you look up here, if you see where the golf fairway is, where that bunker is close to the landing area, there's a trade forested area on that side that just feels like, like this side. It all feels part of the golf course. But in fact, it's actually owned as a separate parcel and allows for modest development over there. But you're going to hear me say later on, that makes no sense to do that, that by all reasonable standards, the most appropriate use is retain it as open space. Not only from the standpoint of the golf course, but from habitat and a variety of other things. So what I'm leading up to is you're going to see a series of studies that are, that are tests, technical in nature. I don't want to represent that these are absolutely the direction that you should go, but they're what you would consider reasonable tests of applying the standards to now each parcel. The first test is, I indicated, is working with existing entitlements and existing property lines. What we do is take, let me take this one. This is the most intense developed area. This parcel allows for up to four stories over parking. It's the most dense allowance on the entirety of these holdings. So what I did, which is typical of the studies that we would do, is I took, I took a building footprint that many of you would be familiar with, which is Timbers. Timbers is a four-story building over parking. There are seven units in a building, which is the maximum allowable units in a building. And I began to test different arrangements of how could you compose in such a way to meet all other standards, off-street parking standards, setback standards, open space requirements, all, all of the standards that you would have to maintain and see how many. So with this configuration, you can have as many as 56 units in this area, not the 60, but 56 units. Because the, the units in these buildings are large units. They're large three and four bedroom units. If you're familiar with them, they're, they're two, 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 one. The penthouse is the one on top. And the ones below are three and four bedroom units, depending upon location, and the penthouse is four. But my point is, I wanted to use a legitimate building type and use it in an honest way of what the yield would be. In a similar fashion, I took the former church parcel, the former Beach Walker Office Park parcel, and I'll, I'll get to this outlier next. And I used a building footprint because now in this area, you can only go up to two and a half stories. So all of this area over here, the only allowance that you can go to is two and a half. So you can't go any higher than two and a half stories over parking or however you want to do it, but two and a half habitable floors. So I took a typical building that I'm familiar with that has two, two, and one unit on top, so that it has two and a half stories. And it's not unlike a big house in a sense where you have parking under. And I composed those in such a way that sort of wandered along the edge of the, of the lagoons. And in this scenario, you can get up to 20 units in this, whereas technically, from the entitlement standpoint, it could be 23. In this area, because the shape of the land allowed for it, you can get the, the 10 units total in this land and meet all the setback standards. You'll also notice that if you were, because I think this is again, an honest approach, it's likely that you would have a common pool and possible modest little fitness room amenity that is only for these people. I, I tested both ideas here and here, and I positioned that over in this location. The final act was, I think, far more technical, because it's not one that we would like, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so on this side, from a technical standpoint, because if you remember, there's a potential buildable area over in here, the technical test of this was you could get four one-story, one-bedroom golf cottages over there in two buildings, like, like two duplexes. Technically, you could do that. You could park because we own this lagoon, even though there's drainage easement in favor of the community association. We own this lagoon section. You could bridge that, park over here with your vehicles and golf cart over to this location. Quite frankly, that's not an unusual thing in remote locations where you have golf and golf cottages in unusual locations. We are not recommending that. I'm not presenting that as a proposal. It's a test. Because the total before, from a paper standpoint, is you could get as many as 97 units from an entitlement standpoint. But this is an honest attempt on our part to say, well, if we had to live with these standards, roughly, how many units could you get? So it's, the test always showed mid to upper 80s and low 90s, depending upon what the nature of the mix is. But you'll see again, one, two, three, four curb cuts, because that's the only way to get into these isolated parcels. So what I'd like to do now is transition to another test using these buildings. So the, the valid test is use exactly the same building types, but reconfigure it with the, with the greater freedom to do a more comprehensive organization of the site, not be restricted to these property lines internally. So what you're going to see next is a study where we took exactly the same number of these larger buildings, these four-story buildings, but placed them in a location away from portion, you know, it's, it's still across the street, portions are still across the street from your River View. I'm not pretending that it's, that it's substantially different than that. But from this point on, all the way around this portion of Greens Lake, the idea is put the more modest buildings at the area where it bumps up against existing development. And there's a benefit to the developer too, because we're putting more units in a, in an internal campus that overlooks the golf course in this position further away. And the only reason there's a difference between 90 and 91 in this is I removed completely the four units over here. And I embedded them in one more of these building types. So I, these are five units to a building. I added one more building to account for as close to a light kind number of residential units as possible. So this is another example of if, if we didn't have these interim property lines and we established standards that the town and the community found acceptable, where you kept everything the same, but you just reposition and, and isolate with a graphic that says only four stories can be in this upper area. You can't have four stories down in here. It shows sort of how it would be different from a site plan organization. As well as, because this would be dedicated solely to residential, we would only have one curb cut. Now, whether it's directly opposite River View or someplace up in this area opposite that lagoon, that, that would be if you were to refine something like this. So the next step was one of the things that we're requesting. Now I mentioned the lead story is we would like to consolidate the lots. We are not proposing any increase in the number of existing allowable dwelling units or commercial. We're not increasing any of that. But more freedom for how it is placed. But one of the standards that I mentioned early on is these building types in Timbers max out. You can only have seven units in a building. So what we'd be requesting as part of this is a change in the standard that we have now done twice and have been approved by town council twice in the parcel 13 area down by the ocean, where we increased the allowance of the number of units in a multifamily building from seven to eight. Down there, it was up to 14 units in a building or 12, I think. This area, we're seeking potential approval to increase it from seven to eight. Here's how it would, how it impacts when you make it, when you allow for something like that to happen. Now, remember, these are all four stories. But if you made the simple decision that now, instead of seven, you can have eight units in a building, you go from eight buildings with seven units in it to seven units with eight units, seven buildings with eight units in it. So it removes an entire building, which increases open space. You can still account for parking under in a, in a very specific way. You actually would have the freedom to, which I didn't do on this particular study, but you could reposition these two buildings to bring this up ever so slightly and pull this away from the shoreline. My point being is the relationship of decisions with each other aren't in isolation in terms of the ability to more properly master plan the site. If we were to retain the existing density limits, but would allow for this flexibility, we believe there can be a more comprehensive plan for this area that would be first and foremost, I'm raising my hand to the benefit of the business plan proposed by the partners, but also has benefit of the surrounding area in terms of things like more open space, more control over ingress and egress. I, I now sort of want to shift to, I'm going to leave it on this one. But I'd like to shift to attempting to summarize what the request is and then touch upon many of the things that I have heard in different sessions like this with different property owners who have reviewed this material. I want to restate, first and foremost, we would like to, let me get up to this one, bear with me. We would like to consolidate these multiple plats in parcels into one parcel, number one. We want to establish a framework with the town and with, that use very specific examples of graphics that would establish that the only area that would be considered for four stories would be up in this up, upper area and wouldn't be any larger an area than what presently exists. And the idea is to ensure that the lower or more moderate density is in a lower section. We would eliminate the potential for four curb cuts, one here, one here, and one here in deference to only one curb cut along Beach Walker Drive if we choose to only develop this for residential purposes. Or no more than two if we were to take a portion of the site, let's say, a portion of the site up here where the old Beach Walker Office Park is, and actually establish a reestablishion office, but in a more, more thoughtful way than those original pods. If that were to happen, we would limit it to a very specific area and only have one curb cut assigned to it, and then the only other curb cut would be associated with residential. We would, bear with me, sorry. We would remove any residential entitlements for this parcel and, and establish that as part of the open space system. And then the final one is if some of you have been involved in some more recent, they were early this year, and I think last year, recent workshops that the town conducted for first and foremost, like the improvements with the leisure trail system, but also examining traffic patterns in this very difficult, complex intersection up in here with Beach Walker and Parkway. And out of that came some observations about, well, how, how the trail system works. Now, all of us on this call are familiar with the difficulty of this intersection. So how many times have any of us pulled up here or coming onto the island here and see a group of people on bicycles stopped? Do they go? Do I not go? I mean, this is by all reasonable standards, a very unsafe condition. So we would also propose that as part of this master trail So we would also propose that as part of this master trail system that the community association, the town work. With together along the parkway, that we integrate a trail connection that wraps around the general store. In this position and then goes somewhere along in here. We don't know where, but we could work that out together. Where there's a more logical and safer crossing away from this very busy intersection. That this would not only benefit these property owners in terms of how they can get on a trail system. And then head out, whether they're gonna cross here and go down to the beach, head to Freshfields, head out this way. But more importantly, equally so, the larger group of people that are a part of the trail system. They could in theory be redirected around a more safer location crossing if they are heading out to Freshfields, but free this intersection from that area. Several areas of particular focus have come up in our conversations. I already mentioned height, the mass of the buildings. I mean, these are big buildings, Mark. What, do you really have to do that? How, where can they go so that it minimizes the impact, if not eliminate those? Our attempt right now is to retain that four-story entitlement. But develop maybe greater setbacks along Beach Walker Drive in this position so that we have an increased amount of both. Natural as well as imported landscape. We would isolate higher buildings in this position as already stated and clarify that more modest. Two and a half story building, more familiar to all of us, would be in another area. Hot topic, traffic. We think the reduction and eliminate, well, the elimination over here makes total sense, even though. That might be viewed as a disingenuous offer. The reality is that's the only way you can get into this parcel right now. So we should, the benefit of having a holistic approach is there's no pressure to that. We would establish on the plat of record that you cannot have vehicular access here. Which is true all along the parkway where we have subdivisions like Oyster Lake across the street. And other sections of the parkway and Governor's Drive where we have residential right up against it. There are on plats of record, you cannot make curb cuts along that area. We would do that along here. And I've already mentioned that in this position. So I'm trying to make certain I've hit all the key points here. But we do think that there's a benefit of a more comprehensive approach to this. And a more honest attempt to integrate the designing with nature principles. In an open space system that feels like it's part of a whole place as opposed to piecemeal in the other form. Shannon, this would be the point where I would go on to the other topic.
Yes, sir. Go ahead on to lot one and then we'll take board member comments immediately following and then we'll move to member comments.
Okay, so I'll end my comment at this point by saying we can come back to. To particular areas of focus or topics on this. But this is provided to the greater community and the board as general information. The entity that takes action on this is town council. We would be meeting with town council as to a schedule. There's tentative schedule that it might be considered on Tuesday because this had an informational session. In the January meeting, but the town is the lead in this, but we will keep you posted on timing for that. But the town council is the one that makes that decision because it's an amendment to the development agreement. The next topic. Is a topic where Kewa Partners is asked, actually asking for consideration of making an adjustment. To an agreement we have with each other, that is between Kika and Kewa Partners. So let me give you some background. What is on the screen right now is at the very end of Beach Walker Drive. Beach Walker Drive comes down here. And you'll see our familiar Beach Walker Park, public parking area over in here. What you've done is pass by Inlet Cove over here, Sparrow Pond is in this position. That's if you were coming from the outside of the main gate. If you're coming from the inside of the gate where you. Go through the central part of West Beach. And you go by the Cougar Point Golf Course and you wind your way down through Sparrow Pond. For those of you familiar with the Sparrow Pond area, this is where the cottage owner's pool is off. If you're driving this direction, it's off to the right. And then you begin to get into a zone where you'll see Duneside Villas, Duneside One in this position, Duneside Two here. The parcel I want to talk about is here and in particular, there's an element of an agreement. That was established or agreed to in two thousand eighteen between the community association. And the partners, when for the first time since the seventies. Because this road, for those of you that remember it, this road, Duneside, literally just stopped. There was no cul-de-sac, there was no formal terminus because this parcel was always envisioned for future development. But it lay dormant until. Two thousand sixteen or seventeen, I believe. Apologize for the memory. Shannon, you were kind to say, I remember all this stuff, but I don't. But it laid dormant. I mean, in future development, originally, for many of you, you may remember this. There was a six-story, three hundred and twenty-five-room hotel. Allowed for this location during the earliest years. Over the evolution of development agreements that started with the now new incorporated area of the town of Kewa Island. In nineteen ninety-four, the very first development agreement, that is this sort of agreement or contract between both parties. Established parameters for all of the future undeveloped parcels. That in nineteen ninety-four, there were quite a few more of them than we have right now. We have very few right now. And this whole area was known as parcel thirteen. And it allowed for up to two hundred and thirty-four total units, I believe. I might be off a unit or two. And the first piece of that puzzle was timbers. They purchased this property to plan and operate their fractional offering. That allowed for up to twenty-one units of those that count. When considerations started for the balance of the property, there was a high level of concern by the greater community of. What should be the, what should the controls be? What can you do? You know, the normal range of questions. There's a lot of traffic coming this way. Is this gonna connect? Are you gonna have a back gate? There are a whole series of well-founded legitimate questions of what is possible with. What might happen? What makes the most sense? As a result of that moment in time in two thousand eighteen, an agreement was established. Between the developer and the community association. That there can be only an additional a hundred and twenty more units beyond the twenty-one of timbers. There can only be an additional a hundred and twenty units that can be accessed from inside the gate. Any others beyond that point have to be accessed from outside or off of Beach Walker Drive. Of that a hundred and twenty, eighty have been assigned to the Cape. Which leaves a remaining number of forty that can only be located in lot one. As part of that agreement. It's not this specific graphic, but it's a translation of a graphic that was included in the agreement with Kika. That established certain parameters of what is inside and what is outside the gate. I've already indicated that no more than forty units could be established. Well, there was a graphic that said, because this predates any planning studies that we had done in this area. You can have no more than forty, actually it didn't say forty, but the math resulted in forty because of Cape. But you could have no more than four residential buildings in this, and amenities in this position. We have initiated, what I'm leading up to is I'm asking for consideration of an adjustment. Of the specifics of where those buildings may be located. I am not asking on behalf of the partners, any change in parameter of density. That would be, and use types and what you're allowed, you know, those things that influence the movement of traffic. It's the nature of where can the buildings be located? Because right now, by any reasonable standard, they can only be limited in this area. And this dimension was listed on a graphic of approximately a hundred and fifty feet so that it could slide one way or the other, but it's in this area. Now, what I'm about to show you is very, again, very early conceptual studies. That are done as a normal course of events. It's similar to what we just shared on the upper parcel, but this is. In a slightly different format. And this, again, I'm just sharing with you, it doesn't have disclaimers on it, but this is a test of a way of thinking. That is leading to a question. I have this slide and the next slide that leads to consideration of a question. We can do up to a hundred units total on this parcel. That's a limitation that we established in the development agreement with the town. In this area right here, we are limited to only four stories, no greater than four stories. In this area here, which is closer to Inlet Cove, Sparrow Pond and Duneside. We are limited to three stories. We agreed, we agreed to that. Now, of the one hundred that is possible, this study is very similar to almost every study that we've done. Which is, our studies yield closer to plus or minus eighty units, not one hundred. It's plus or minus eighty. This one was eighty-two. We have some at eighty and some eighty-four. But the reason I'm sharing this with you is this is narrowing the spectrum of what we think is appropriate for the site. In this site, this building, rather, this study, rather than putting up to four buildings in this area. This shows a pattern of, we distribute the buildings in such a way that there's more open space in this whole area. By placing one of the buildings here where we have residential over an amenity building. And then the other three buildings actually break through, this is where I'm going to show. The request, consideration where these buildings, which would be placed here regardless of what the access is. But that these buildings be accessed from this side. So, and I'm gonna come back to that in just a minute. So the specific request for consideration is rather than compress buildings in this position. And only limit access to those buildings in this manner. We're asking for consideration that the plan would benefit by, and it's the same number of units. That we have a portion that we could establish together up in this area, that these buildings could be accessed from inside the gate. What this would allow us to do is our target is, let's say we use eighty units, just because the math is simpler. That we could have half of those access from inside the gate and half of those access from outside the gate. If we don't, if we are limited to the conditions that we presently agreed to before we did planning. Our likely scenario would be, we would reinvent all of this and put. We would put probably three buildings across in here. And then ever slight, slight adjustment over in here. And we could access these buildings from Beach Walker. It's more likely gonna put more traffic flow onto Beach Walker. Which we're allowed to do. I mean, in theory, in theory, we could take all one hundred and access Beach Walker Drive. But we think a more appropriate market offering is some inside the gate and some out. I'm sorry, I have a blower coming. Some outside the gate. So that's the nature of the request, is consideration. Can I be put on pause just a minute and tell them to shut down? I apologize, I apologize. I'll be right back. It's officially a Zoom call. Dog barking and blowers, so I apologize. So. So I come back to this point in time is the, what we're requesting for consideration. For you to think about is relief such that we don't change any parameter that deals with. With the normal intense development of traffic flow and that, we're asking for the ability to. In our minds, more comprehensively master plan in this area, to expand this area. With the parameters of what you can't do any more than a certain number of units. So with that, I might just stop. And I can go back to whichever candidate that we want to talk about.
Mark, thank you very much. Can you all hear me?
You can, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Obviously, an awful lot to digest. I want to make sure our members get a chance to weigh in on all of this and we have a hard stop at three o'clock. But first, if any of our board members would like to. Make any comments, now would be the time and then we'll go to our members. And Shannon, you can navigate that with our members, right?
We, we will.
Okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Chairman, which topic would you like me to have up on the screen as the beginning of maybe some questions? Do you want to stay with this topic or the other one?
Why don't we go to parcel one, which seems to be the most comprehensive and I'm sure the one that people have a lot more questions about.
You mean the first topic?
Yeah, first topic.
Right, alright, okay. So what I'll do is have this on the screen, but then I can go to an appropriate screen to maybe address a comment or question.
That works. Brad, do you want to start?
I'm just sorry, had to get unmuted. Mark, thanks. I mean, I'm glad that the board could do this as a public meeting. And I'm glad that we could get all this information out there. One of the questions I've had raised is why are the taller buildings? In the area where they're gonna be more visible to everybody coming into Kewa?
So, I'm assuming that using this as an example. Question. I think there are two, well, first and foremost, I think there are two questions that we are trying to answer internally. The first one was, we, without even revealing the idea of this that we have done with the community. We felt that to have the taller buildings more embedded. In the sub-areas of this zone across from Inlet Cove Club or certainly across from Greenslake here. Was a, that wouldn't be a preferred direction. That, that it would be more, if we were to consider the taller buildings, they should be pulled away from that area. Number one. Number two is, we believe that there can still be standards established. So for example, no development in this area and a greater setback in this location that has seen from the road. That that impact would be diminished. An example would be if, if many of you and your members are familiar with Maritime over by the hotel. Between the Roy Barth Tennis Center and the hotel. That's a three-story plus building over parking that I would suggest if you drove by it, you almost would be. You wouldn't be that much aware of it. That would be our intent from a design standpoint. Clearly, from a business standpoint, we would prefer to have more units overlooking the golf course in this location. But we do think, we do think that when you begin to balance a variety of issues, including impact on adjacent. Existing development, that it would be better to locate any consideration for the taller buildings in this portion of the site.
But as far as the view, for all of our, everybody else who isn't in this development, the view. Would arguably be worse for our members.
I would suggest that because of the tree canopy in these areas, if you're coming. On the parkway, that you would not necessarily be aware of these, these buildings.
Do you have any drawings that show what you're proposing?
No.
I mean, the questions I guess I have is why are you coming without really a more developed plan?
Because we don't know what the rules of engagement are yet. We do not, I've been asked multiple times, is this the plan? And I said, no, we don't know what the plan is until we know what the rules are. If if if, for example, Brad, if, for example, we were told that, no, you need to, absent that, you really need to work within the existing development controls, the plan would be more like this. We could represent that. We could represent that.
But if you control all the land, you could have, you could have access without going through curb cuts, for example, in this upper one. Wow, you could just grant yourself access across your own land.
But I I would, I would wonder about that in terms of challenges to that, but let's say we could. That we can't place buildings any differently than that because we have property lines in here. We can't put buildings over property lines or the setbacks, can't put, can't do that. So the ability to manipulate where buildings should occur is much more restricted because you you have all of these zones which you cannot place buildings on. You you can't put any buildings over that. But I, but the 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 first part of your question about how is this seen from outside? It that's, I understand that. And we we could in theory do studies that show sightlines when you're driving down the parkway here. To what degree do you connect to a building in that position? And we could we could simulate that. We could, I could take the Timbers Building and place it, I'll use this, excuse me, place the Timbers Building in this position with the existing tree canopy along in here and over in here, and we could, we could simulate to what degree do you visually see it while you're driving? So I have that down. Have that down.
Mark, how tall is a four-story building? How many feet?
You are, let me grab something here. We
It's four stories over parking, am I correct?
No, it's four stories. It's like Timbers, yeah. We are, we are, we cannot be any higher than 50 feet above base flood elevation. That's the limit. And the other, the others, the other areas like these buildings, no more than 35 feet above base flood elevation. That that's one of the standards.
Mark, I have a question. The this height issue. If you, you've got a lot of open space there, could you increase the, keep the number of units the same, increase the number of buildings, get it down to three stories? Is that feasible? So it it takes that height up?
Yeah, no, that, that's a, that's a really good question. So for example, let me, let me verbalize it. So let's, to your point, let's take the same number of units. But rather than it's a composition of two and a half stories and four stories, to what degree would you take three-story buildings? You know, like Maritime is a three-story building. I could take the Maritime template, which has six units in it, that building has six units in it, and do a test, but I would test it for the entire area. I wouldn't isolate um, the two and a half stories in this area, and then this is three stories. Um, I could, I, as one case, one case would be, no, we keep the two and a half stories here. In this area over in here, I already know that if I took roughly the same number of units in this area, which is 56, and put those in three-story buildings, I I already, I already know that I'm going to have more building footprints, so I'm going to be pressing, I may be pressing my open space requirements in this area. But I think that's a good question of is three stories more acceptable? Well, it's more acceptable in four stories, but would three stories still achieve the flexibility that the partners would want?
What's the height limitation on three stories?
Uh, well, I mean, that would be self-imposed, but um, well, it I mean, a quick jump would be to remove 10 feet. You would typically have 11 to 12 feet from floor to floor plate heights, but it would, we could probably reduce the 50 feet to say low 40.
Okay, and and if the two and a half stories went to three, that'd be going up half that amount?
Yeah, right. I mean, we just, we would, we would take a typical, my, my approach would be to look at the design of Maritime and see what that height, what that height range was, knowing that the internal ceiling heights are appropriate and how they work floor to floor. There's enough clear for the parking under and a variety of other things. But so I don't know if I answered your question in exact terms, but there would clearly be an adjustment uh, that would be considered for the three stories.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. I understand. Thank you.
Any other board members have comments? I want to make sure we allow time for our members. Alex, did you have something?
Yes, 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 I do. First, Mark, I appreciate your presentation, very professional. I appreciate the fact that you say, you know, this is for information purposes. The town really at the end is the one that makes the final decision, but I do have some opinions and comments about it.
Sure.
There, there, there are two lots that you regularly mentioned in your presentation of the harm that they would do to the community. One, the ingress or egress immediately after the first gate, uh, that that small lot, and and the fact that the piece by the Cougar, of course, you know, the the danger or the impact it would have on greenery, etc., okay? Uh, I think you have to mention too the the marketing issue of it. I I think it also is difficult for you, marketing-wise, to sell these properties. I mean, to tell somebody that you have to have ingress and egress immediately after that gate and maybe sit there for 10 minutes to be able to get out of his property. I don't think it's a very marketable piece, so I don't know if the argument that let's combine all of these plots because it makes sense and will will not do any harm to the community. I think you have an issue to overcome of marketing those pieces too. I mean, to tell somebody you got to park here and get on a golf cart to get over to your property because you got to go over a little bridge over to the pond. I don't know if that's a marketable, that's not, it's very difficult to market. So I I don't know if those plots are at all should be included in this this combination because I don't believe they're marketable. They're not, they're not properties that can easily be put in the market or, you know, have something of value to sell. So that's my comment.
Um, well, if I, if I could support that comment, um, I wouldn't disagree at all. And I I just don't want you to misinterpret the nature of the analytical part of this. I was, I was asked a legitimate question by um, some property owners during one of the sessions. Well, you really, the the frame of reference was, and it was legit, you know, I understood where they were coming from. Well, you really can't develop that. Well, technically, you could develop it, but I believe we have a good pattern historically on Kiowa. Even though you can do something, that doesn't necessarily mean, means it's the right uh, thing to do in extreme conditions like this. So that's why I was quick to preface my comments about the ingress egress here. And the whole notion of developing this, it makes, I think I even used the words, it makes little sense, much less marketable. So I would, I support that and I agree with it. I I just want to let you know that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mark, I just have one more question real quick. Um, we have a park, we meaning Kika has a parking lot at what's considered parcel 11.
Uh, yeah, let me, can I go? You see, you mean that the future parking area?
Well, if you look.
Oh, 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 I know what you're talking about. Um, oh, right here. Okay. So you see, you see these little dash lines right there?
Right.
You see how it bridges the property line here?
Right.
So we have, Shannon may want to comment on this, but I think we have, we had an agreement that when this property is ever to be developed in the future, that this would evaporate and we would give you more than sufficient time to know that. But this little notch over here was intended to house a parking area that would be attributed to replacing that. And you would, you own that.
Would the partners do that, or is that something that you're expecting Kika to do?
It's primarily budgeted for Kika.
Yeah, I was going to say, we we provided the land. We provided the land over here so that you had it fee simple. Right there. Right, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so so I, did I answer your question? It it was this, this was somewhat of an informal agreement. It may have been formalized, I don't know, to allow for that to be in a temporary state until we needed to develop this. But over time through a whole, I think this was actually part of some other unrelated issues. We donated this land to Kika to allow for that to find a home over here.
Shannon, do we know whether that's reduced to writing in any form?
Oh, we own, we have a deed on that property.
No, I mean that this informal agreement about the parking lot.
Um, I believe it started under the town of Kiowa Island. Um, I know it started under the town of Kiowa Island and then transferred to Kika, but I'll have to look for it, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Shannon, how many, how many parking slots could we put in that? I mean, people would have to walk to our building to park there, right? I mean, it's a
Sure, I mean, the upper parking lot as it's currently is now is generally employee parking, primarily security. Because they can't park at the main gate.
But in that little, in that L shape lot there, how many parking slots could we, spots could we put?
I can't answer that question off the top of my head. Our engineers have looked at it and have looked at it with Mark as well. Um, but I can't answer the question off the top.
It's almost like outside of the property. I mean, you'd have to take a, you know, a nice walk to get to our building to park there, right?
No.
Alex, I think it's about the same distance to the building.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you can see this very well, but I'm, that's where the existing one is. Here's the proposed one. Um, so it's, it's, I I would consider it somewhat the same distance, but I don't know what time it is.
Do you know how many square feet that little parcel has, Mark, for any chance?
Um, I do not, but my memory was when we did parking layouts for that, Shannon, that we were replacing like maybe 24 spaces or so.
I wanted to say 20, but I I don't want to quote it off the top of my head.
Yeah.
We're in the range, Mark, we're in the
Yeah, well, we're both
You have a better view of that than I do, but can you see what those dimensions are, the vertical?
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize. So that's 100 feet right there. And this is 108 feet right here. And not unlike this one where it's sort of split, you know, like some spaces are over here that the parking area in here allowed for access here and it could come down, it could come down a little bit. You know, when you double load the parking area, you could actually shift it down a little bit. So let's, let's, that's probably where I came up with the 24. But I think it's in the 20 to 24 range where you'd have 10 on each side or 12 on each side, that sort of thing.
Okay, um, at the, I don't want to be obnoxious, I'm the timekeeper, but I want to make sure any other board members have any comments because we want to get to our members' comments as well.
And particularly, both of our comments on lot one, down by Timbers. None for me.
Yeah, let's do the board comments on the Timbers, uh, parcel one, where some timbers.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Does anybody on the board have questions about the lot number one, I guess?
Mark, I I have, I have one comment, and I had, just as an aside, I I talked with Townsend about this a couple of years ago when Timbers was going in and the Duneside Access, and I made a bet with him that after a while, the people at Timbers and at parcel one that exits Southern Pines are going to be saying, why can't we go up the other way? It's such a hassle going up through Duneside. And he wouldn't take that bet. So I I just, uh, I I mean, it's the same number of units. I don't have a problem with what you're proposing. I'm just thinking that over time, I I see the potential that the people that are going to access the Cape, Timbers and these 40 units eventually going to say, why can't we go up the other way? And I I just, that's my theory that we're going to hear in the future.
I I wouldn't disagree with you. I probably, the very few questions I get about this general area down here uh, from, from existing property owners is, is that ever gonna, is that ever going to break through? And they, the, the, the question, the foundation of the question generally is about exit. It's not about ingress egress. It's about exit. And so um, we're obviously bound to the agreement, which does not allow for that to happen. But I I think it's reasonable to anticipate regardless of what happens in this area, or anticipate, you know, when the new hotel goes in, you know, that there are probably a lot of people that don't remember a vital hotel in that position. And West Beach was a lot different place than than it is right now. And that's a good question, comment.
Mark, I have one quick question for you. Has there ever been, given the amount of traffic that is about to occur uh, with construction and then residential people going down a beach walker uh, and then on to a new hotel or whatever, to moving the gate to an a a more efficient place away from that intersection?
There was another interesting question. I mean, I remember an era, now this was a long time ago. There was, there was an era where there was a dialogue um, in the, in the community at that time. I, and I, when I say the community, everyone, the developer of the resort, the community, everyone to reposition a gate much further west on the parkway. There were, there were tests of like Mingo Point. You know, like that, there were incremental test, not tests, but thoughts of there, or should it be, this is well in advance of Freshfields and the Roundabout and a variety of other things. Is there a zone in that long straightaway on on the parkway? Uh, after you pass, when you're coming onto the island, but you've passed Freshfields and you have that long straightaway before you get to Kaseek, that somewhere in that zone might be appropriate. Um, they never came to any conclusion, those conversations, but it has come up multiple times in in the very distant past.
All right, well, thank you. If, if there are no other comments from board members, let's uh, move to our members and Shannon, you can navigate that for us if you'd be so kind.
Yeah, and Jerry, I think Mark had one finishing
Yeah, I apologize. I I apologize. No, that was my fault. I do remember one of the stopping points in that conversation about moving the gate was a con- a concern that, well, now we have to allow for people that are going to the public beach access area to be behind the gate. And even, even though they're probably very focused on going to the public beach access, it then allowed for people to go wherever they want to go in the community. So I I forgot about
Good point.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. So we're going to move into member comments and we're going to try to organize this a little bit both for the audience and for our board so they can hear your comments and focus in on your comments. Um, the question that's actually in front of the Board of Directors today is regarding Lot One down by Timbers, Kiowa. So we're going to start with questions on that topic first, and then we'll move to take comments and questions on the parcel consolidation between Kika's offices and the general store. Uh, we want to take as many member comments as we can prior to our 3 o'clock end. So please try to limit your comments and questions to three minutes to permit as many of our members to speak as possible. If you have additional comments or questions that you want the Board of Directors to consider on either of these things, you can always email them at board@kika.us. All members of the Kika Board of Directors receive emails to that automatically. Um, so we're going to start first with the topic of Lot One by Timbers, Kiowa. If you have a specific question about that parcel, if you would raise your hand and we can call on you. I do see we have some hands raised. If you are not talking about Lot One, could you please lower your hand for a minute? All right, Ellen, if you want to go ahead.
Sure. Our first raised hand is from Jim Jurasic. I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Jim, you should be unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Good, good. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mark, for the presentation.
Good, good. Uh, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. Um, I'll raise my hand again. I, I do have a quick question or statement on parcel one comment. Um, you, you know, Mark, it was hard to tell from your plan how exactly you, um, and I know it's just a rough one, but how you plan on segregating traffic that was, uh, within the, within the site itself. Uh, that was coming in from Beach Walker and coming in from, from Duneside. Um, and, um, I just think that, you know, there's a security, I know that there's a security concern. I know the whole discussion that went on back when this first happened about having a second security gate back on Beach Walker. But I, I think that that's part of it. My general concern that I think the Kika Board needs to consider, and this is sort of a global thing that'll come back up when we talk about the other parcels is we need to stop, in my opinion, giving the partners approval before there's a final plan. Um, what happens is we, we, we give these approvals, things change, they get move around their promises, they get chipped at. I think it's very important that until there's a final plan, that no approval be given um, to, uh, to anything that's being, um, requested at this point. So I'll leave it at that for now and I'll come back with my comments on the other, um, parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, our next question is Philip Mancusi Ogaro. Phil, you should be unmuted.
Okay, oh, there it is. Okay, I could not see my hand raising lower, so I was kind of not sure what to do here. I do have a couple of questions about Lot One. And Mark, I know back when the Duneside conversation started with, I mean, Timbers opening up Duneside Drive to Timbers. There was a traffic study that was done. Has there been any traffic studies done since then to look at current traffic loads on Duneside Drive? As well as the additional load that will come from the Cape? And now additional load that would come from whatever development we're talking about here that would access Duneside Drive?
Um, is it okay if I answer that?
Yes, sir.
Um, there, there have been no additional traffic studies done, but that would be easy to incorporate this updated information in the traffic studies that were done before. The ones that were done before accounted for, um, the, the higher density overall in this area. But I do think it would be appro, to your point, it would be appropriate to, um, maybe in many ways, update, uh, just traffic information in various areas of the island that where you, you have more information to provide. Um, but, but the, the, the very quick answer is we have not updated those because these are less than what we provided before.
Okay, thanks, Mark. I, I, I think, you know, in my experience with developments over time, and I'm sure you've seen the same thing and everybody has, is that we don't always really look closely at the true traffic loads that the existing roads can handle. And this one you mentioned already, and everybody knows when that hotel goes in, that little traffic circle and getting out to Kiowa Island Parkway is just going to be a traffic nightmare. And so I think traffic counts are necessary here, but a holistic plan should be driven forward to figure out how we're going to handle this because it's going to come and hit us sooner or later. Um, are the partners willing to participate in that? Is that something Kika and the town, or how do you, how do you make that happen?
Well, as, as it relates to, um, collaborating on studies like that, I mean, I, I'm going to convey this to the partners, but uh, not unlike the traffic study that I mentioned, the town is doing, you know, up in the upper area in the Parkway and everybody. We're absolutely willing to participate in that in terms of both, uh, technical assistance and, and others that might be considered by the partners. Okay, your, your point, your point about a holistic way makes total sense that these, these decisions aren't in isolation. That e, even the patterns within existing developments evolve over time. So it's good to reflect in appropriate, uh, timeframes.
Well, right, and then you'll get, when you get back to talking about the other, the, the other part of the project. Same thing happens there is that what's the traffic load going to be on Beach Walker Drive? And then you add these. I just have a somewhat stupid question. Where does Cape Point Road go? It seems to go off the map and I'm not familiar enough with that area.
Well, that's all about Captain Sam's.
Okay, enough said.
Yeah, so, uh, for those that are less familiar with this, um, running story. Uh, right now, um, the, you know, the Beach Walker Drive sort of technically ends in this position. But there's a plat of record that shows a segment in here that is known as Cape Point Road. But the, that, that falls off and goes hard that way, west, uh, to serve what might be a residential neighborhood. But as we all know, that's under, um, under review by a lot of people right now.
Thank you, go ahead, Ellen. Thank you. Our next question is from Joe LaSala. Joe, you should be unmuted.
Hi, it's Joe LaSala. Can you guys hear me?
We can, sir, thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much. Um, I live at one twenty-eight Bob Cat Lane in, in Riverview. And I appreciate the opportunity to make a comment or two. And I'm going to test your, um, your limit on the first round of comments to Lot One. And I say that because, um, I think, I think in any case, we have to look at these two suggestions together. And I recognize that the one up top, um, is not, is not under Kika's authority or jurisdiction. But the, the, the development of Lot One is. So there is a combination in it, so, and I do think they need to be looked at in tandem. Um, there was a good discussion about height restrictions and what, what that might look like. And all, I would, I would suggest to you that for some of us, the height, while it is important, the height restrictions are important. They aren't the most important consideration that some of us have. Um, more important considerations relate to density. And, you know, the number of units that are going to be included and of course, traffic which has been alluded to. And I, I think I very much appreciate the comments about the traffic considerations, not only down on Duneside, but on Kiowa Island Parkway and certainly on Beach Walker there. All of those things, in my view, have to be looked at in a comprehensive way as relates to both of these, um, development projects. So I would just endorse that, that comment, and I appreciate what Mark said about the partners' interest in participating in, in all of that. You know, um, a, again, I, I think, um, the main point that I would like to make is that uh, with respect to, um, the, the northernmost project, and I apologize for taking it out of order again. Um, the, the, uh, the issue of density, the amount of traffic load, the amount of just impact on that, this whole area of, of the front gate and the intersection between Beach Walker and Kiowa Island Parkway. And then the backside issue on, on Duneside. I, I think all of it has to be looked at somewhat comprehensively by, by some, by all of us, I guess, is, is the answer. I mean, you put ninety units up top and eighty units, um, on, on Lot One. It's a hundred and seventy units times two is three hundred and forty cars. Um, additional cars moving in and out of this area with some amount of regularity. Of course, we don't know what that would be. That would be, have, have to be subject to, to these various studies. So, um, that's really the main point that I want to make. Uh, I appreciate the openness that Mark has displayed. And, and of course, the involvement of, of the Kika Board and all the Kika members, so, um, thanks very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Our next, um, raised hand is Mark Sinski. Mark, you should be unmuted.
Okay, there. I think here, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can.
Great, well, thank you again, everybody. Thank you, Mark. I, I love this presentation and that it's, it's just makes me relieved to see what's really going on. And, uh, so, Mark, thank you, and Board, thank you for putting this on a public, uh, display. Um, uh, where I'm just going to address my comments first of this, uh, Lot One. Um, this whole area, as Mark will remember, Lot One, the Cape, the Timbers was all supposed to be accessed originally off Beach Walker Drive. It was all of the Beach Walker parcel. And in the last year since the development agreement, this, the partners have whittled this to be more and more going through Kiowa Island because it's obviously a better access, it's a more valuable to the property. Uh, um, and, and makes it more valuable to send and with, uh, with all that. So, but we, we're, we're accepting what we have, we have. Uh, my simple question is, Mark, are you saying that with this amendment to Lot One, you are still, you are not increasing the number of units coming onto Duneside Drive than there would be with the skinny narrower hundred and fifty foot parcel? How many units we're going to go on to Duneside Drive and how many will go on if we, if the council accepts your amendment?
Uh, no, no change in what the allowable units are from Duneside Drive. No change. There's, there's no, no adjustment to that. We're not seeking more units that way. Um, what we're asking for is flexibility of how what we're allowed to do can be positioned. Um, if, if the answer is not in our favor, then we would do the same, we would find a way to do the same number of units in this compressed area. We just think it's a, it, it, it's a different plan, Mark. Um, so, but to answer your question directly, there's no change. There's, there's not a way to snuggle more units in. We're, we're limited to the number of units that are accessed from Duneside Drive. And we're not, we're not violating that or, or finding a, finding a way to get around that.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Next question is from Paul Glazare. Paul, you should be unmuted.
Paul, can you hear us?
Oh, can you hear?
I'm sorry, how's that?
That's perfect.
Okay, okay. Mark, thank you for your presentation. I remember you saying in your, uh, testimony about opening up, uh, Duneside Road to Southern Pines load, road, that nothing on that side of the road is going to come from Duneside, was all going to come from Beach Walker Drive. Uh, on parcel one.
No, no, I, we, we, um, we entered into an agreement with the Community Association to limit the number of residential units that could be accessed from Duneside Drive. But, but we never said you, there wouldn't be any units up in this area, uh, access from Duneside Drive.
I was the president then. I don't remember signing any agreement, Mark.
The agreement was between Kiowa Partners and Kika. While, um, all of that was being negotiated with Duneside and Timbers and cottage owners.
Right, yeah. And there was a graphic, there's a graphic in that exhibit that's sort of, um, it, it's not, it's not this graphic, but there's a graphic that is, shows green areas that can be accessed from inside of Duneside Drive. And it showed all of this, all where the Cape is, and then it just showed where this yellow is. It, um, Paul, it, it's Paul, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I heard your familiar name. The, the, uh, it, the, the green was over in here too. Which is the nature of our request today, is we're not asking for something. We're, we're asking to, uh, be flexible about where the green is as opposed to before. We restricted it to a very specific area. But no change in the unit counts.
Yeah, because we're, we're very sensitive, we're very sensitive about the volume of traffic coming down that road, as you know.
Right, right.
And we appreciate some of the safety improvements that both you and Kika provided us, but, uh, you know, it's marginal at best. So a new traffic study would be excellent if you did it in the height of the summer.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think the point that was raised by, uh, Joe, Joe, I think, right? That, yeah, to, to, you know, I, I would, I think Joe's intent was this. It's not just about these areas that we're talking about today, these two areas.
He was talking about the whole.
There, there's a, there's a value in a refresher, you know, miles, you know, like benchmarks. Where you can see, because as we all have witnessed, our, our, I'm showing my gray hair here, the people that have been here a while. It, it changes. You know, what happens early evolves over time. And, you know, it's, it's not a fixed sort of pattern that just goes up and to the right. It sort of flows with different patterns, different preferences and a variety of other things. So I, I'm a big supporter of this sort of comprehensive approach to monitoring certain metrics.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Next, um, raised hand is Larry Radkowski. Larry, you should be unmuted.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, not to, not to beat a dead horse on this, uh, issue of parcel one and, and traffic. But, uh, it was sort of almost jokingly, uh, stated that at some point, people who have access, uh, you know, to Southern Pines and Duneside, uh, from the lower part of the development are going to want to have egress to Beach Walker because it's going to be easier. Um, you know, that needs, you know, that, it needs to be clear that that can't happen. Not so much because of the egress to, 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 or traffic on, uh, traffic on Duneside. But I don't want people bypassing the gate by being able to come in through Beach Walker.
Larry, the current agreement doesn't allow for that? The agreement with Kika and KP would have to be modified to allow that?
Yeah, no, I understand that. It's just that doing some very casual references about how people would want to be exiting.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Larry.
Our next, um, raised hand is Perry Malinoff. Perry, you should be unmuted.
I should be unmuted. Am I, Shannon?
You are, sir.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Shannon. Uh, I have a question and comment that may actually apply to, to both of the, uh, subjects that are under discussion. Um, and the, the Timbers represents a fractional ownership, which is, I think, unique to Kiowa. Um, it's an approach that a lot of us have somewhat less than enthusiastic about. And so my, the first part of my question is, uh, when you talked about the first set of, of parcels, uh, you used the footprint of the Timbers, uh, as, as your model. And so my, my first question is, uh, are you anticipating that, uh, both of these two set, uh, subjects uh, would involve fractional ownership buildings?
No.
So can, can you go further on that?
Well, no, I mean, there is no intent or consideration of that. My use of, my technical use of the building footprint was it, it exemplified um, a certain number of units within a building within the height constraints and parking under it. It was a metric, it wasn't about the form of ownership. But, and, uh, if I even suggested that, I, I apologize. But no, I mean, the, the intent would be, these would be whole ownership or by, by that, I mean, condominium form of, uh, ownership, not fractional. Hasn't even, hasn't even entered the conversation internally.
That's good, that, that, that does help a lot. Um, and so this may not be really a relevant, uh, part of this subject. But, uh, did you consider, uh, going to single-family homes on these parcels? So then the eleven acres might be enough for twenty or thirty single-family homes rather than, than ninety occupancy units?
Um, I'll, is it okay if I shift to the graphic, Shannon, since we're wandering? Let me go. All right, let me, let me just use this platform as a reference. We, we have done studies, it hasn't been this low a density. That, this is Riverview across the way here. Um, it hasn't been this density, but we have done studies of town, like these are townhomes right here. We have done studies of townhomes and, um, attached some, uh, single family. If I use the word attached single family, we can charge more than if I use the word duplex. So the, um, but we can use attached single, I've done studies in that area. Yes. Yes, it, it's, that's the normal process of what you begin to test in terms of the range of options. Uh, so I wouldn't want to present that this is the one and only way. I'm presenting this as this, these entitlements allow for this to happen. And it can be tested in terms of a better way to consider it. But to answer your question, there have been tests of not single family alone, but some form of more moderate density, and it's usually in the form of townhomes and, um, duplexes.
Thank you, Perry. Um, we're still trying to get any other comments about Lot One down by Timbers Inn so that the Board can hear those. Um, Ellen, go ahead.
Your next comment is Alan Reed. Alan, you should be unmuted.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can, sir.
We can.
Hey, uh, Mark, thanks, first of all, thanks for a very informative presentation. Quick question, uh, given all the, uh, potential development of Lot One, what's the planned beach access for those residents?
Um, there are two, um, let me, let me go back to this one right here. Can you see this one? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, so, um, if, if you are familiar with the area, um, we added this beach access. um, we added this beach access between Timbers and Duneside Two. Um, I, I want to say two years ago, but I'm probably off a little bit. Uh, in anticipation of not only providing additional alternatives for the greater community to get out to the beach, but, um, also this future development in this area. There is another one planned in this position that will be part of the Cape development. So they're obligated as part of the sale of this from the partners to East West Partners to integrate a beach access point through here. Now, it may be, it may feather this feather one way or the other, but the idea is to have two principal beach access points that, for lot one.
And the one to the east of Timbers is Boardwalk Zero, and that's currently owned by Kika.
Right. So I guess this is minus one.
Yeah, that's negative one. That's right.
Right.
Thank you, Alan.
Uh, next, next comment is Gay Stathis. Gay, you should be unmuted.
Hi.
Hi, Gay.
Gay? Did we lose you?
You're muted.
Unmuted.
There you go.
I don't know why I unmuted and it muted, then here we go again. Anyway, um, development of parcel one in that whole area as it's being developed with the Cape. And then the additional parcel we talked about earlier, or the combination of those parcels. I've got a rough number of 325 units if you add in a new hotel uh, to the mix. Can our water and sewer utilities handle that? I think sometimes it seems like we all just assume that that's a given, but is it really a given? And for sewer, where does it go from there? That new development? Where's all that sewage go? It concerns me if it's going out to the ocean or the river. Um, then also, is there any issue involved with parcel one and also the previous one we talked about? With the short-term rental ordinance? Is that going to cap down people's ability to rent these condos?
Um, Gay, if I can answer partially the first part, can you hear me? Okay. Cause I,
Yes, sir, we can.
I can answer partially the first question you asked about infrastructure. In terms of capacity, I can't answer that. Someone else needs to answer the capacity question. Uh, we assume that there's sufficient capacity, uh, for all our parcels going forward because we provide updated figures about future development, not with plans, but with numbers whenever we're asked. Um, as it relates to actual physical connections uh, for both parcels, I can, I can't say exactly where they are, but right here, that is a sewer easement right there that provides, uh, connectivity for Timbers and Cape. And that connects to a system that goes up Beach Walker Drive. So that, that's the system that we would be tapping into. Now, the latter part of what you said, I, it broke up at my end, so I don't know what the subject is. I'm sorry.
Ellen, can you unmute Gay for a minute?
Yes.
Question.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, I was just asking about water and sewer, um, capacity for all these units that'll be coming on, assuming also the second hotel will be built by the golf resort. My other question is, why do you want to have access to this parcel one from Beach Walker?
Why?
Right.
Well, two reasons, um, well, two reasons. We, we think that in this parcel, there is reasonable diversity of market preferences of some people that would prefer a site that actually is closer to going to other destinations that Beach Walker Drive would provide. And secondly, um, there was a clear statement by the greater community when any development was considered in this area that, and you, and you've heard it on other voices, that there's, there's serious concern about increased traffic internally. So the, the agreement precipitate, precipitated a balanced approach that certain number of units would be accessible from inside the gate and a certain number could be accessed from outside the gate. So it was a combination of, of things. One is, you know, arguably you use judgment on it, which is an understanding of market preferences. Some people prefer inside the gate proximity to other things. Others would actually prefer being close to the beach, but they really want to jump to, you know, maybe job related for all I know. They, they, they want to have more direct access. This, this approach that we figured out together and is represented by this approach, which is roughly 82 units, half of which are accessed outside, ha- half of which are accessed inside. Well, our hope is that we might be considered for this adjustment, but it was, it was sort of 50/50.
Thank you, Gay. Um, we want to save enough time to be able to get to the consolidation of lots. So if we could, we're going to take one more question on lot one. And allow Mark to answer that, and then we'll switch to consolidation of lots because we do have some people with hard stops at 3:00 PM. Um, and again, if you have a question about lot one that wasn't answered, please email it to board@kika.us. If it's a question that needs to go to Mark Kromar, we can certainly get it to him. If it's a question you want in front of the board of directors, they all see the incoming emails to that address. Um, one more, Ellen, on lot one.
All righty. Next, um, is Adam Dunhofer. Um, Adam, you should be unmuted.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Adam.
We recently purchased a house right there on Scott Court, I guess a cottage. So, uh, my question regards to lot one. Mark said, well, we're going to get 40 units in that yellow zone, one way or another. You know, from looking at it, it seems like he could still get 40 units, but they're just going to have to be smaller in size. Therefore, maybe not four bedroom units, but maybe two bedroom units or three bedroom. Uh, you know, just did a quick take off on the floor plan of the units that he has proposed. You know, and just the floor plan alone is 40,000 square foot, whereas the whole area of the yellow zone is, uh, 50,000 square feet. So in order for him to stack all of those units within those building heights, uh, he would have to cover pretty much every square inch of that. So, you know, of course, my, my position is, yeah, I want as few cars coming down that road as necessary, just taking the beauty of the island away when you're all of a sudden on an interstate and you're not in a, in a resort anymore. Um, so those are my questions. Mark is the, by, by go, by expanding or changing the area that you're requesting, are you actually getting more floor square footage that's going to be included in the resort itself?
Um, if I understand the thrust of your question is if, if we were, um, if we were required to stay within the, the shaded area, the yellow area, would we revisit this plan and press, we would press harder on square footage attributed to units within there? I would say yes. I mean, that, that's what we would look at. And I don't, I don't know what that number is, but, uh, you, you explain one alternative, which is the mix might be different than what's represented here. But, uh, trying to think of the other part of your question, but we would, we would, we're presenting this in an honest way of honoring the intent of the agreement of limiting the number of units accessed from Duneside Drive, but asking for consideration of where those units had occurred. If, if we, if it's found to be, no, Mark, God bless you, but you know what? We need to stay where we're at. Uh, we're going to revisit this plan and that plan would have more compression. That would have more, uh, more units in this concentrated area. It may not, it may not be more units total. You know, it, this, there was probably adjustment for the other, but it, it would be a subtly, well, I think, you know, a, a different plan. I would just leave it at that. It would be a different plan where there's more compression in this zone.
Thank you, Adam. All right. We're going to switch topics so that, um, those who are on the call who want to ask questions about, um, parcel consolidation located between Kika's offices and the general store can ask their questions. Um, so Ellen, go ahead.
Sure. First question is Steven, Steve, Steven just dropped.
Next.
Let's see. Um, first one on this next topic is Jim Jurassic. Jim, you should be unmuted again.
Okay, I think I'm back. Thank you. I'll try to keep, hi, I'll try to keep it brief again. And rather than getting too technical, just sort of two, just sort of two global comments. One is Mark, in, in the context, you're looking for an amendment to the development agreement. I know this isn't Kika exactly, but it can pull back to it. Um, what, rather, going that direction rather than doing a conventional, um, uh, consolidation and, and zoning adjustment, um, what, can you explain to everybody? I think it's, uh, the benefits that you get from, from doing it through the development agreement? Because the church parcel, everybody should know, is not currently part of the development agreement.
Right. It would be folded in, but you're asking about the benefits of the development agreement approach versus,
To you or to your, to your client as the developer? Yes.
Well, we, we have since 1994, through various administrations and quite frankly, through various partners in the master developer role. Um, the development agreement approach has, I believe, proven to be a really good balanced approach of control and anticipated expectations of future development between the master developer and the greater community. That is more predictability. Um, through, if you just use conventional zoning, that's not to say that that can't be done, but it tends to be less comprehensive an approach. So when, what we've learned over time, and this is usually accounted for with, with forms of develop, uh, amendments to development agreements, is that it gave us a chance to, you know, the, from, the value of the developer in this is, once you agree to a development agreement, that those standards are frozen. They are not subject to change unless both parties agree to a change. So a developer in, in, I'll, I'm obviously representing that role, can commit resources well enough in advance with an assurance that you can do certain things. As opposed to when you have more conventional zoning, you can be subject to a municipality choosing to take an initiative to change, um, development standards or change, um, uh, use provisions and so forth. So are, the reason we're going through an amendment process of that is we think it is consistent with the history of work relationships between the master developer and the town.
Thank you, Jim. Go ahead, Ellen.
Next question, um, Philip Bencusi and Garrow. Phil, you should be unmuted.
Hi, Mark. Um, I won't repeat my prior question about traffic studies, but I do think this area is even more ripe for that. In particular, since the town is going through a process of trying to reconfigure that intersection. And I hope they're considering the, in the additional number of cars and vehicle use that will be coming out of there. Which brings up the second question, which is, these areas that you're talking about, all these different parcels, if you get them consolidated, you build whatever you, you're planning to build there, are those folks going to have access to Kiowa Island? Um, because that is something to consider too at that intersection.
Right. Um, as it relates to the first one, I just would build upon our discussion and answers prior, which is, as the, the town is conducting its traffic assessment in a global sense, for, you know, from the main gate out, we're ready and able to provide, um, available information about the nature of what might happen on all our parcels, much less this one. Number one, uh, as it relates to when you're a property owner in this future neighborhood, regardless of what the plan is, you're, you're a property owner, just like any other property owner. That is, you're a member of the community association. You have access privileges to what any member of the community association has. So there's, there's no plan that there's a special or unusual standing of a property owner in this area. They're, they're, they're equivalent to all of us on this call in, in terms of, uh, our, uh, our role as a property owner and responsibility as well as our rights.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Next question is Bradley Belt. Brad, you should be unmuted.
Uh, thank you very much, Shannon or Ellen. Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Thank you. Uh, uh, really want to applaud, uh, the Kika and commend the Kika board, uh, for holding this public hearing. I, I think the number of people that registered and have signed on reflects a profound interest on the part of the entire community with respect to these types of development projects. Uh, I should note that, uh, I'm a resident of the River View community and on the River View board. Uh, one of my fellow board members chimed in previously on with regard to parcel one, but suggesting that both issues need to be looked at, uh, in combination. And I would agree with that, but I want to expand briefly upon that. Uh, and I want to, uh, uh, commend and applaud, uh, uh, Mark for his very artful presentation of the developer's interest. Uh, but I think that's what's really critical at this point is to understand that this is in the developer's interest. And one can certainly understand and appreciate, because he's talked about marketability. He's talked about site preferences to allow 50-foot buildings to have actual views across the pond onto the golf course. All of those things are in the developer's interest. It would not be possible without parcel consolidation. The River View board is already informally indicated to, uh, the town council and will more strongly informally indicate its strong opposition to, uh, lot consolidation, parcel consolidation as currently envisioned. And certainly, and I think this issue was raised previously without a fully developed plan, not giving Kiowa Partners a blank check to develop these parcels. Um, I won't belabor all the issues that are involved with this. Certainly would come back directly to the board, the Kika board, even though I understand it's primarily a town of Kiowa Island issue. But it's obviously something that profoundly impacts the community as a whole. It places in, in increased demands and pressures on infrastructure, roads, amenities, et cetera. Uh, so I think we all need to be mindful of that, and I hope everybody that is listening in on this is mindful of that. And we'll also probably chime in on, on Ikiwa. And I don't want to speak for, uh, the members of Inlet Cove and the board members there. I don't know if any of them are on this, but we've had conversations with them, and I think they generally share the perspective of, of the River View community. Just one thing I would like to specifically point out with regard to parcel 11, and I don't know if Mark can pull up alt one. But, uh, Mark indicated that, uh, you know, the partners were being very considerate of the perspectives of uh, the Inlet Cove residents and River View, uh, residents by moving the proposed 50-foot buildings from the back of the lower parcel up to near the general store and higher on the, the, what would be a combined track. Uh, with all due respect, uh, certainly the River View community does not agree with that whatsoever. To the extent that those taller buildings were ever be built, it would be our strong preference that they would be actually back in parcel 11, not up near the general store, not having opportunity to tower over the general store. And in fact, I encourage everybody to look, because I think, uh, board member McElvein raised the issue about sightlines from the intersection. And Mark talked about all the tree scape. Well, because that parcel, that top parcel's already been cleared, there is actually not much tree scape right there. So looking right over the general store, you would be seeing as current, as in outlined in the uh, test case that, uh, Mark presented, 50, 50-foot buildings, uh, kind of immediately in your sightlines. But I, I know our time is short and I suspect there are other comments, but I just want to convey to the entire community that we believe that the best course of action for the entire community would be to hold Kiowa Partners to their current entitlement rights. And they can make their own decision as to whether they want to build eight key, uh, timber-sized buildings in the lower parcel with those high construction costs. And then they will be marketing those. And then they will be marketing those without the ocean, without any views, and with very few amenities, and we'll actually see if that actually happens. But what, uh, the consolidation would do is confer a substantial economic benefit on Kiowa Partners without a corresponding benefit for the community as a whole. And to be clear, one or two fewer curb cuts is not a substantial benefit for the community, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Uh, next comment is from Oscar Pedraza. Oscar, you should be unmuted.
Hi, everyone, can everyone hear me?
We can, sir.
Great, thanks so much for the presentation. I appreciate everybody uh, who've come on board. Uh, my question is, uh, the original parcel allows for ninety-seven units. Uh, and whether you look at test one or test two, and clearly, if we're going to have to choose one, I think test two, in my eyes, would be the beneficial one. But there allows for ninety-one units versus the ninety-seven. Does that mean that the remaining six or seven units in either option would then be uh, held as open space in perpetuity? And that the developer would no longer be allowed to develop those uh, units or lots at any point in the future? Thank you.
Um, sure, the answer would be yes, on two levels. First of all, once the, the master plan is uh, committed to, uh, not only is it appropriate to, and we would use any legal device appropriate to confirm that what is considered open space would be maintained as open space, but as, as many of you know, there's a representation issue at point of sale of what you're representing, people are seeing or are nearby. Um, so we take those representation issues as seriously as possible about what you're representing can and can't happen in certain areas. So in this context, for example, just using this as an example, that even though today their entitlements, even though they're technical in nature, entitlements on this area, we would so dedicate on a plat or whatever legal vehicle is possible that this is dedicated open space. That would be an example. You know, other examples would be as you develop the site plan, I'm just using this as an example. Maybe, maybe I should use this one. If, if, for example, there is certain open space in certain other areas, we'd be doing the same thing. But, um, but I mean, it's a good question, because in theory, can you do one thing and then just at a later date actually sort of creep in there? If you, if, if it's intended to be open space, it would be dedicated open space.
Thank you, Oscar. Oscar, next question is Joan Avioli.
Yes, hello, and thank you, Mark. Uh, Mark, I wanted to comment to you that you began by noting that the early slogan, which I think is still the sailing slogan for Kiowa Property, "Designing with Nature." And I have to tell you, with these plans, nature takes a beating. We haven't, we've talked about how many units and how high and what roads, but nature goes away in a significant degree with these. Um, so that's a big concern for me, and one I wish more people had even mentioned, uh, and I wish more women had called in. I, Gay and I apparently the only two, including our current board members, who are speaking up on this issue. But uh, the other one has been spoken many times, and it is traffic. And we're thinking that we can get away with adding hundreds of more to this crowded area right at the current gate. And in addition to that, the hundreds of huge construction trucks, which will have to be coming and going for a few years more to do, do these developments, and we're thinking that that's all okay for Kiowa. I'm not sure that I agree with that, thank you.
We're going to have time for one more question.
Could I um, respond to Jen real quick, do you mind?
Sure.
I do.
Absolutely.
Mark, could you slide down, go down to the slide that you haven't really discussed yet, which is the site analysis slide for the consolidated parcel? I just wanted to let John, Joan know that we have begun to identify where the uh, more significant tree canopy is. For example, there's some really nice canopy where, where Mark is circling there. Um, we have begun the, the traditional site analysis of this property as we would with any designing with nature approach. So just wanted to assure you that, that we are not skipping that step, thank you.
Ellen, all right, um, next, um, and according to Jerry, our last question again, and Mark Siski. Mark, you should be unmuted.
Thank you again, and thank you for this last time. Um, uh, one thing, Mark, you pointed out is, you didn't point out, but combining parcels is always a good thing for planning. I think Kiowa has benefited from the huge island being combined as one for many, many years. And um, so I think we need to try to stay that course. This new parcel connecting, reconnecting them, I'm surprised to say it, but I think it's a good idea. I think when you divide these parcels into separate pieces, you get what we don't want, which is a bunch of small, poorly designed pieces. Let's do one cohesive piece. I'm also frankly to say, I'm delighted that you are not looking at, and maybe you can verify this, you are not going to have connection to Kiowa Island Parkway from parcels eight, nine, and ten, correct, Mark?
That's correct.
I, I, the, the parcel, you're, you're showing two A, is actually very palatable. I even think that the height of the buildings, you have shown it, um, the, the highest buildings towards the intersection. That's how a good planner would do it. You want the highest buildings to be there, you don't want to have it more towards the single-family areas. That is, so even that, I think, i- is good. So um, if there are no more units being shown here than what we're uh, given, if there's no more cuts into our gate, I think it's a good plan, and um, I'm delighted, and thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Jerry, may I ask him one question to clear something up for me anyway? On, on lot one, uh, Mark, uh, to, to clear this issue up, that new uh, configuration that you have submitted to the board, that will not give it access to Beach Drive, Beach Walker Drive? The new configuration.
Um, I apologize, you, you, oh, the new one, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That one?
That's correct. Also allowing this new configuration will not allow, will not have access to Beach, I mean, the new access will have, they'll have access to Beach Walker Drive? No, or yes?
Yes.
Uh, this, this area would not, no, this, this, this isn't another way to get to Beach Walker Drive. This, this is only allowed for inside of, if I'm answering the question correctly.
Right, what, what was a straight line now becoming an L, does not give them access to Beach Walker?
No, 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 and what we-
Because that, that was the issue about security. People were worried about security, because if you have access to Beach Walker Drive, you have access to Kiowa.
Exactly, no, a, a good point. I probably should have emphasized that this isn't like a circuitous way to go through a building, parking area, and then bump out to Beach Walker Drive. So for example, we would have, uh, the, whenever the site plan review process uh, is underway, new plats are prepared, and then we would prepare non-access easements along certain areas so that you, you, you're precluded from connecting that way, in, in a, in an obtuse way.
Okay, so it'll be isolated, it'll be isolated, basically.
That's correct.
And only access through the gate, basically. Those buildings would have access through the gate.
Right, like, this sort of tries to emphasize this zone is only accessed from inside of here. You cannot, yeah, no, no driveway or air, you know, that sort of thing.
So somehow you would, Ben said, or how, how would you, in the, okay, well, anyway, I, I, okay, it's clear.
I think the point, Alex, is it's not final yet, and I think that's what Jim raised, Jim Jerosic raised.
Well, yeah, no, I, obviously, yeah, we, that's what we want to be sure, I mean, we couldn't allow access to Beachwood Drive from, from that, to those units. But that would, would violate the security issue that we've talked about.
Right. Okay, we're at our hard stop. I'd like to thank Mark and everyone else who participated um, in this. And please, if you have other follow-up questions, uh, send them to the board. We will, this is, uh, there's just our opening uh, ability to interact with the partners, and I'm sure there'll be other refinements. Uh, so thank you again, there will be more to come, and with that, I think we can adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second to do that?
Second.
Okay, thank you, everybody, talk soon. Um, on behalf of the partners, I thank you very much for making this possible. Okay, thank you for your presentation. All right. Yeah, bye-bye. Bye-bye.